Okay, we're gonna get started in less than a minute.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Good afternoon and welcome to the November 5th, 2025 City Council Meeting. I will ask everyone to please rise for the Canadian National Anthem.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in our love of common. Car ton brasse porté l'épée, il s'est porté la croix. Ton histoire est une épopée des plus brillants exploits. Car keep all end glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Can be seated. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional lands of the Treaty Four Territory, a treaty signed with thirty-five First Nations across southern Saskatchewan and parts of Alberta and Manitoba, the original lands of the Cree, Soto, Dakota, Nakota, Lakota, and on the homeland of the Métis Nation. The city of Regina owes its strength and vibrancy to these lands and the diverse indigenous peoples whose ancestors' footsteps have marked this territory, as well as settlers from around the world who continue to be welcomed here and call Regina home. Some members of City Council and City Administration may be attending the meeting today through video conferencing. I'd like to remind those who are attending through video conferencing of the following. Please ensure that your video camera and microphone are turned off, and when speaking, remember to unmute your microphone and turn on your video camera. Some delegations may be attending the meeting today by teleconference to address City Council on various items on the agenda. Can I have someone move a motion to approve the agenda at the call of the chair with the following adjustments? To add the registered list of delegations and to add delegation DE twenty-five dash two one zero Jim Elliott to item MN twenty-five dash sixteen and to remove item CR twenty-five dash one thirty-four Investment Policy from the Consent Agenda. Councillor Mansonelli and a seconder, councillor Radins, thank you. I'll call the question on the approval of the agenda. Any opposed? And that is carried. I'm now going to call an acting city clerk, Amber Ackerman, to address a matter arising from the March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. Go ahead.
Through you, Mayor, it was brought to light that I need to bring the following matter arising from the March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes in relation to item MN twenty-five dash five Playground Accessibility. It was determined that there was a typographical administrative error made when our office prepared those meeting minutes and that the following edit needs to be made. That the following wording from point number one of the resolution be removed and replaced under a new point number four. Direct administration to report back to the Executive Committee in Q four, twenty twenty-six prior to the twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight budget deliberations on the following. And that the new point four read as follows. Direct administration to report back to the Executive Committee in Q four, twenty twenty-six prior to the twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight budget deliberations on the following. Current pathways or playgrounds constructed with engineered wood fiber be tested to meet A S T M one nine five one levels with a rotational pentrameter with a subsequent recommendation to outline maintenance or replacement solutions to keep surface maintained to A S T M one nine five one level. B, investigation of a central indoor location for the recreation of an indoor all-year-round destination playground to minimum three hundred meter square in size. Include city of Regina properties, real properties and possible private partnerships include within recreational master plan. Develop a strategic playground plan to develop access to a destination playground for all residents within a maximum travel time of twenty-five minutes on a transit route or eight minutes by car. Prioritize locations with adjacencies to schools, childcare centers, community centers, group homes, senior centers and health centers. Include possible partnerships, timelines and cost options to achieve full community coverage. Include strategic playground plan within the recreational master plan with a minimum recommendation of renewing a playground annually. D, investigate options to create or utilize an existing grant program for community groups who are upgrading or creating new playgrounds to meet the Regina accessibility playground standard. Include stakeholder engagement to understand effective financial incentives in groups. And E, present proposed new playground design to accessibility committee for review provisions and purchase. With that, our office will ensure that the March twenty-fifth meeting minutes are updated to reflect that typographical error that should have been included in those meeting minutes.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Can I have someone move a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October twenty-second, twenty twenty-five City Council Meeting? Councillor Rasevich and a seconder, councillor Flores, any errors or omissions on those? Seeing none, none of those, I'll call the question. Any opposed? And carried. We will now consider the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is moved and voted upon without debate as one item regardless of the number of agenda items included in it. The Consent Agenda for this meeting includes the following items. CR twenty-five dash one thirty-five Planning Application Submission to the Canada Housing Infrastructure Fund, CHIF. And CR twenty-five dash one thirty-six Prioritization of Twenty Twenty-Six Playground Funding. I'll ask if any member wishes to remove any items from the Consent Agenda for consideration and debate at this meeting. Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? Councillor Bezo and a seconder, councillor Rasevich, any opposed? And carried. Okay, we'll move on to public notice reports. So first, I'd like to call upon delegation DE twenty-five dash two zero nine Brad Clifton. You can come on down to the delegation table. And once you're settled, I'll get you to introduce yourself for the record, the organization you're representing, if any, what city or town you reside in. You'll have five minutes to address City Council, after which you'll have the opportunity to respond to any questions Council may have for you. You can go ahead whenever you're ready.
Brad Clifton, Troika Management Company Corporation out of Kelowna, B.C. I'm representing the first file on the agenda for Rosewood Park. First, I'd like to thank city planning staff for their thorough review, their recommendation of approval and their continued collaboration on the design of the Rosewood Park neighborhood. Before I speak to the impacts of this amendment, I'll briefly introduce Troika. While we are Kelowna-based, we are proud to be the developer of the Rosewood Park neighborhood, working closely with several local Regina builders. At Troika, we believe in building sustainable communities, not just buildings. Our work is guided by the values of innovation, integrity and long-term sustainability with an emphasis on balancing people, place and environment to ensure every project we undertake leaves a lasting positive impact. At its core, this proposal is about creating the right kind of housing in the right places at the right time. The changes before you will enable future purpose-built rental housing that meets Regina's growing demand for attainable, high-quality homes, particularly for residents who want to live close to schools, parks and future amenities. Our role as the neighborhood developer is to ensure the land is properly entitled and serviced to make that possible. This amendment reflects a responsible planning approach and directly supports the city's complete neighborhood and primary intensification policies. By focusing density within a defined node where existing infrastructure, transit routes and community amenities already exist or are planned, we're maximizing the city's investment in infrastructure for the Rosewood Park neighborhood. This approach creates more housing choice, encourages walkability and supports local services, all while maintaining traffic, servicing and capacity well within city thresholds. As part of this application, WSP prepared a transportation impact assessment confirming that the Courtney Street and Mapleford Boulevard intersection operates well within capacity even with the additional traffic anticipated for the proposed rezoned parcels. Even with those positive findings, we chose to go further. In response to community and school feedback, we made several refinements to our Phase Two concept plan. We reduced density, shifting several high-density parcels in Phase Two to medium-density residential. We introduced a new laneway to improve circulation and provide additional on-street parking adjacent to the school. We committed to planning a secondary public access in the next phase of the neighborhood connecting Silverleaf Boulevard to Wayland Drive. We've already begun working with city staff to explore potential locations for this connection to ensure it's practical, coordinated and aligned with long-term mobility planning. A concept design for this future connection was included in the delegation package. These are proactive refinements, small but meaningful adjustments that strengthen the livability, functionality and safety of the
We acknowledge that we are on the traditional lands of the Treaty Four territory, a treaty signed with thirty-five First Nations across southern Saskatchewan and parts of Alberta and Manitoba, the original lands of the Cree, Soto, Dakota, Nakota, Lakota, and on the homeland of the Métis Nation. The city of Regina owes its strength and vibrancy to these lands and the diverse indigenous peoples whose ancestors' footsteps have marked this territory, as well as settlers from around the world who continue to be welcomed here and call Regina home. Some members of City Council and City Administration may be attending the meeting today through video conferencing. I'd like to remind those who are attending through video conferencing of the following: Please ensure that your video camera and microphone are turned off, and when speaking, remember to unmute your microphone and turn on your video camera. Some delegations may be attending the meeting today by teleconference to address City Council on various items on the agenda. Can I have someone move a motion to approve the agenda at the call of the chair with the following adjustments? To add the registered list of delegations and to add delegation DE twenty-five dash two-one-zero Jim Elliott to item MN twenty-five dash sixteen and to remove item CR twenty-five dash one-thirty-four investment policy from the consent agenda. Counselor Mansonelli and a secondar, Counselor Radins, thank you. I'll call the question on the approval of the agenda. Any opposed? And that is carried. I'm now going to call an acting City Clerk Amber Ackerman to address a matter arising from the March twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five meeting minutes. Go ahead.
Through you, Mayor, it was brought to light that I need to bring the following matter arising from the March twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five meeting minutes in relation to item MN twenty-five dash five playground accessibility. It was determined that there was a typographical administrative error made when our office prepared those meeting minutes and that the following edit needs to be made. That the following wording from point number one of the resolution be removed and replaced under a new point number four: Direct Administration to Report Back to the Executive Committee in Q4 2026 Prior to the 2027-2028 Budget Deliberations on the Following. And that the new point four read as follows: Direct Administration to Report Back to the Executive Committee in Q4 2026 Prior to the 2027-2028 Budget Deliberations on the Following. Current Pathways or Playgrounds Constructed with Engineered Wood Fiber Be Tested to Meet A S T M one-nine-five-one Levels With a Rotational Pentra-Medir- Pentra-Meter With a Subsequent Recommendation to Outline Maintenance or Replacement Solutions to Keep Surface Maintained to A S T M one-nine-five-one Level. B Investigation of a Central Indoor Location for the Recreation of an Indoor All-Year-Round Destination Playground Minimum Three Hundred Meter Square in Size. Include City of Regina Properties, Real Properties and Possible Private Partnerships Include Within Recreational Master Plan. Develop a Strategic Playground Plan to Develop Access to a Destination Playground for All Residents Within a Maximum Travel Time of Twenty-Five Minutes on a Transit Route or Eight Minutes by Car. Prioritize Locations with Adjacencies to Schools, Childcare Centers, Community Centers, Group Homes, Senior Centers and Health Centers. Include Possible Partnerships, Timelines and Cost Options to Achieve Full Community Coverage. Include Strategic Playground Plan Within the Recreational Master Plan with a Minimum Recommendation of Renewing a Playground Annually. D Investigate Options to Create or Utilize an Existing Grant Program for Community Groups Who Are Upgrading or Creating New Playgrounds to Meet the Regina Accessibility Playground Standard. Include Stakeholder Engagement to Understand Effective Financial Incentives in Groups. And E Present Proposed New Playground Design to Accessibility Committee for Review, Previews and Purchase. With that, our office will ensure that the March twenty-fifth meeting minutes are updated to reflect that typographical error that should have been included in those meeting minutes.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Can I have someone move a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five City Council meeting? Counselor Rasevich and a secondar, Counselor Flores, any errors or omissions on those? Seeing none, none of those, I'll call the question. Any opposed? And carried. We will now consider the consent agenda. The consent agenda is moved and voted upon without debate as one item regardless of the number of agenda items included in it. The consent agenda for this meeting includes the following items: CR twenty-five dash one-thirty-five Planning Application Submission to the Canada Housing Infrastructure Fund, CHIF, and CR twenty-five dash one-thirty-six Prioritization of Twenty-Twenty-Six Playgrounds Funding. I'll ask if any member wishes to remove any items from the consent agenda for consideration and debate at this meeting. Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Counselor Bezo and a secondar, Counselor Rasevich, any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to public notice reports. So first, I'd like to call upon delegation DE twenty-five dash two-zero-nine Brad Clifton. You can come on down to the delegation table. And once you're settled, I'll get you to introduce yourself for the record, the organization you're representing, if any, what city or town you reside in. You'll have five minutes to address City Council, after which you'll have the opportunity to respond to any questions Council may have for you. You can go ahead whenever you're ready.
Brad Clifton, Troyka Management Company Corporation out of Kelowna, B.C. I'm representing the first file on the agenda for Rosewood Park. First, I'd like to thank City Planning Staff for their thorough review, their recommendation of approval, and their continued collaboration on the design of the Rosewood Park neighborhood. Before I speak to the impacts of this amendment, I'll briefly introduce Troyka. While we are Kelowna-based, we are proud to be the developer of the Rosewood Park neighborhood, working closely with several local Regina builders. At Troyka, we believe in building sustainable communities, not just buildings. Our work is guided by the values of innovation, integrity, and long-term sustainability with an emphasis on balancing people, place, and environment to ensure every project we undertake leaves a lasting positive impact. At its core, this proposal is about creating the right kind of housing in the right places at the right time. The changes before you will enable future purpose-built rental housing that meets Regina's growing demand for attainable, high-quality homes, particularly for residents who want to live close to schools, parks, and future amenities. Our role as the neighborhood developer is to ensure the land is properly entitled and serviced to make that possible. This amendment reflects a responsible planning approach and directly supports the city's complete neighborhood and primary intensification policies. By focusing density within a defined node where existing infrastructure, transit routes, and community amenities already exist or are planned, we're maximizing the city's investment in infrastructure for the Rosewood Park neighborhood. This approach creates more housing choice, encourages walkability, and supports local services, all while maintaining traffic, servicing, and capacity well within city thresholds. As part of this application, WSP prepared a transportation impact assessment confirming that the Courtney Street and Mapleford Boulevard intersection operates well within capacity even with the additional traffic anticipated for the proposed rezoned parcels. Even with those positive findings, we chose to go further. In response to community and school feedback, we made several refinements to our Phase Two concept plan. We reduced density, shifting several high-density parcels in Phase Two to medium-density residential. We introduced a new laneway to improve circulation and provide additional on-street parking adjacent to the school. We committed to planning a secondary public access in the next phase of the neighborhood, connecting Silverleaf Boulevard to Wayland Drive. We've already begun working with city staff to explore potential locations for this connection to ensure it's practical, coordinated, and aligned with long-term mobility planning. A concept design for this future connection was included in the delegation package. These are proactive refinements, small but meaningful adjustments that strengthen the livability, functionality, and safety of the Rosewood Park neighborhood. For us at Troyka, this isn't just about a rezoning. It's about ensuring the framework is in place for a well-designed, sustainable community that reflects how people truly want to live. We're proud of the collaborative work completed with city staff to ensure this amendment and the next phase of Rosewood Park deliver on the vision established in both the concept plan and the official community plan. In short, this amendment sets the stage for a cohesive, balanced, and future-ready neighborhood, one that combines housing diversity, efficient land use, and a strong sense of place. We appreciate the city's partnership throughout this process and respectfully ask Council to support Staff's recommendation for approval. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. I'll go to my colleagues for questions. Counselor Mansonelli, go ahead.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming out today. Appreciate the investment in our city as well. This is my area, I'm the counselor for it. This has been a very active file for me with the school appearing by itself about a decade ago. What's the timeline for developing what you're proposing for this change today? How many years, if we said yesterday, would it take to drop the first brick and have it, people move in there?
The anticipated timing, there's some civil infrastructure adjustments we need to do early next spring, but I would anticipate the developer of that parcel will start next summer.
Next summer? Thank you. What's the timeline for a second access to this area?
So we've already submitted a rezoning application for the Phase Two parcel. We did that, I guess, three or four weeks ago now. Through that process, we are preparing a transportation impact assessment, which will include a discussion on that secondary access and the location for where it's to be planned.
Appreciate that. Do you have any idea what that is in a timeline until you act on Phase Two, until you might make the investment of a second access to this neighborhood?
We will be out there starting the first thing in spring, as soon as we get the approvals to build out the remaining balance of Phase Two, and part of that will include that secondary access. So next spring.
Next spring is when you'll be starting to look at it, but if you, like, I would believe that with one access to the neighborhood, two schools, and medium density in an apartment building, a single access has been really evident not to be enough for what people's needs are. How long till they could drive out a second access, do you think?
Yeah, I anticipate we will start construction of that secondary access if all the approvals come in line with what we've submitted, next spring.
Perfect, thank you. Sorry for having to pin that down.
No, I get it, yeah, I understand. Thank you.
I appreciate that. That's one of the biggest complaints of this neighborhood, along with the parking, and I note in the report that you've made the adjustments you can to parking. Is there anything that stands in the way of the second access appearing next spring? Is there anything that could stall it, hold it back, or anything?
Winter weather. Winter weather. We gotta, we gotta get through the winter and start, start in spring. So the sooner we get out there, the sooner we'll get it, get it constructed.
Okay.
We'd go sooner if we could.
Always have to balance the needs of the neighborhood, to the needs of the city, to the expectations of the residents who might use the streets. I know I'll receive some pushback on more density in this corner compared to the commercial If we were to say no to the density you're asking for in this corner, how would that affect that second entrance?
I think we would, we would continue to proceed with, with the Phase Two parcel. We, you know, we'd have some adjustments to do on the rezoning of that to accommodate perhaps a different type of bill form. We would still be proceeding with Phase Two.
Okay.
And I do want to point out that the TIA that we included with the rezoning for this phase and, and the additional density that it focused on with the proposed construction next summer showed that there was no to minimal traffic impact at that Mapleford and Courtney intersection. So the, the TIA concluded that, so a secondary access is not needed at this moment in time, but we've committed to doing it anyway.
I guess just to follow up on that question, noting leaving Maple Ridge in the morning with no signalized traffic at the signalized intersection and the school being a prominent draw, pedestrian traffic moving ninety-nine percent on the north side of the road because the school's on the north side of the road, residents of the current areas have a hard time gaining access to Courtney to get onto their commute during the day, with all the pedestrians on the one side of the road, as well as all of the people dropping off kids at school, exiting out and turning right. Single-lane road on Courtney, like I said, no turning and having to get in with pedestrians. So I have a hard time understanding how your traffic assessment feeds into no problems. Could you explain that?
I, I think it's focused on AM and PM peak periods, so that, that, that analysis showed that there was minimal impact. I think there was also an assumption that a number of people in the proposed development, in the mid-rise buildings that are proposed to be developed, will be walking to the school or accessing the inner parts of the Rosewood Park neighborhood by other means other than vehicles.
As part of the upgrades, would you be against having some type of signalized traffic signals at the Mapleford Gate in Courtney?
I mean, it certainly could be discussed. I wouldn't be opposed to it if it was, you know, something that was desired.
Yeah, I really appreciate you bringing the solution on board along with the ask. That was, I saw the proposal in the package, but it wasn't quite as definitive as you laid it out today, so I appreciate the definition you've given it.
Yeah, and I want to point out that we were, like I said in my speech, we're committed to the, the completeness of that neighborhood, and part of that includes a secondary access, not just for the existing residents who are there and the people who use the school, but also the future purchasers in the second phase. So we want to provide that as well.
Within the package, there's a line that reads, "There may be an interest in converting to low-rise apartment-style buildings instead." Could you just elaborate on that? It doesn't really feed into it too much, but it's kind of a catch at the bottom of Administration's report. What is?
Yeah, can you, can you perhaps elaborate on the specific?
Sorry about that. I should have it on my page ready when I ask my question, my bad. Just taking a moment to find it. It's right at the end of the report. Sorry, I caught the statement in the report, but I can't find it under the gun, so I guess that's my bad.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, and staff can elaborate this on a bit, but the residential low-rise zone that we've proposed as part of the amendment supports up to, you know, mid-rise, mid-rise-type format, four to six stories, I believe, six stories is discretionary based on the zoning. And then there's, there's, you could also go down to a low-rise-type format or a town home-type, type format. So the zoning for that particular residential low-rise zone is quite broad.
Okay, I did find it. It was just above the assessment, although the city may is not reviewing a development application, the applicant has indicated they may pursue low-rise-style apartment residential buildings, so.
Yes, yeah, it would be, yeah.
This was a contentious density conversation a couple of years back with the neighborhood. Height was one of the big things that they spoke about. Will this have any contrary thoughts to what was negotiated with the existing neighborhood at that time?
So we're actually downzoning a large portion of the site from high, high-density to, like, low-density residential. So as of right today, the zoning is more permissive than what we're proceeding towards, so I think, you know, I think that's a step in the positive direction for, for those discussions.
Totally understand. It's the word apartment that kind of makes the question happen. Thanks for the clarity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Zekiniak, go ahead.
Thank you. So I, I guess my question kind of follows up on, on the last question and comment in relation to density. So I just want to make sure I understand. I understand that there is changes occurring in relation to the proposed density of the neighborhood. Does that mean overall this, the end of the Rosewood, Rosewood Park will have less density than what was originally planned for this development? That's the first thing I want clarity through the chair, thank you.
Yeah, and I think I'd follow you, Shannon. So as part of the application process, staff asked that to support the, you know, the, I guess, perceived increase in density, even though we are downzoning it from high-rise to low-rise. We recognize the bill form is, is potentially, you know, four, four-story building. In order to support that and address some of the issues surrounding the, the traffic concerns from the school, we did adjust some of the concept plans amendment. We did, we did a concept plan amendment on some of the Phase Two parcels, reducing a few of the blocks from high-rise down to medium-density residential. So we, we have accommodated further in Phase Two some density adjustments. I hope that answers the question.
It does a bit. So does that mean, sorry if you're hearing background noise, I'm not in the airport, but if, does that mean overall that the neighborhood will have reduced density or just this phase?
Correct.
And I guess as a follow-up, yes, it will have reduced density?
Yes.
Okay, and then, so do you have, this is helpful to me, what, like, for your entire neighborhood, do you have, how do we measure this? Like, I think it's parts, no, sorry, we're doing like for hectare, how many people for hectare? Do you have, I don't know if you have that information at the tip of your?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have it handy, but I'm, I'm pretty sure staff would have that concept plan amendment drawing, which would include projected densities. So I don't know if they have it handy or?
We, yeah, we, that could be asked in after, yeah.
So I can ask them that. Yeah, I'm just trying to get a sense of, like, the other neighborhoods we approved and how this fits into the overall density of plan, concerns, projections, all of it. So I will ask staff for that information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Burton, go ahead.
Your bet. Thank you. I noticed on the west side there, it said we're changed to medium density, and there was a laneway added. I was wondering if you could describe why the laneway was added?
In the simplest sense, to reduce the amount of garage access onto Mapleford Boulevard. So with garages in the rear, a lane in the rear, there would be less cars backing out onto Mapleford Boulevard, and that in turn creates more on-street parking for the school. So it was a, I guess, partial urban design consideration. We're extending that laneway through from Phase One, and then it's also a parking consideration for addressing the concerns of the school board.
So through the chair, in areas in my ward, I do not see necessarily a, any reasonable reduction in on-street parking with the, the addition of the lane because?
Counselor, just make sure we're asking questions about this development?
Absolutely. I'm just using this illustrative example here, because people lose the pad in front of their house, or it might have a garage that's facing onto the street. So I was wondering if you could explain, because if I got a garage in the front, I've got my garage, and I'll have a pad for one car, so I got one-car garage, I got two. If I go to a one-car garage in the back, I don't have a second.
Yeah, in this, in this particular scenario, staff have made it very clear that there would be no garages permitted to front Mapleford Boulevard. So it's a, it's a rear garage, rear lane-type product, and that's what our builder we're working with is intending of building.
Okay. I was trying to understand it, is there a convenience store in the neighborhood that's shown? I couldn't seem to find one in the map there.
No, there's not a convenience store, not, not planned presently.
Is there any grocery stores or anything like that?
No, but there are some other core anchoring community features. There's a daycare there, there's obviously the school, there's the existing neighborhood park. So, you know, from a complete community standpoint, I think there's some very strong functional pieces to, to make the neighborhood special.
So it's, it's a fair distance to the nearest shopping and convenience area, whether it's going all the way down Rochdale or going to the Norman View Shopping Center. And so with a complete community for kids to hang out and not have to cross a busy road, I'm going to call Courtney a busy road, and parents would be concerned about that. That why would there not be some things like that to build out that community so that parents have that confidence that my kid wants to just go out and I want to go to the corner store for something that they're, that I'd consider that part of a complete community, and I just am a little befuddled that it's not included.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand your concern. I, I think when we plan for these things, we look at commercial uses, and sometimes those commercial uses can either be, you know, directed at a, you know, mercantile-type, you know, food establishment, fast food, or they can go the way of being a daycare, which is also a Courtney. So sometimes these things, you know, work out, you know, potentially with different uses, but, you know, a similar intent.
Okay, so yes, I'll just end with a comment, that it's concerning to me that it's not showing in the future.
Counselor Burton, can I ask you to just hold your comment until we go to the staff, and you're happy to use your time to make a comment?
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you for your presentation today and answering your questions.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Go to the gallery. Okay, we will now consider items CR twenty-five dash one-thirty-three, Concept Plan Amendment, Plan and Zoning Bylaw Amendment fourteen fifty-eight and fourteen sixty-two North Courtney Street. And I'll ask Counselor Siklis to please introduce the report.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. The Regina Planning Commission met and discussed this, and the recommendation was that we approve the revised Rosewood Park concept plan, as you've seen in the documentation, and approve the application to amend the zoning bylaw by rezoning the property described as, well, there are a lot of numbers there, I'm not going to read them all out, to rezoning issues and to amend the zoning map, also to instruct the city solicitor to prepare all the necessary bylaws to give effect to the recommendations to be brought forward following approval of them and the required public notice.
Thank you, Counselor. Can I have someone move the report? Counselor Siklis, a secondar? Counselor Rasevich? Counselor Siklis, do you wish to speak any further to the report?
I know.
Okay, and any questions from my colleagues? Counselor Mansonelli, go ahead.
Thank you through the chair. As I was asking the delegate, secondary access to this neighborhood, he was indicating working cooperatively with Administration to try to get something going for the spring. Is that Administration's understanding as well?
Ms. Bryden, go ahead.
Thank you through the chair, yes, that is correct.
Looking at this neighborhood and the overall action in northwest corner in Courtney Street, this borders on Courtney as well. I've had a couple of calls from residents asking about upgrades and twinning of Courtney. I was just wondering how this affects that and what's planned for Courtney itself.
Go ahead.
Thank you through the chair. I can refer that question to Mr. Mario, please.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, through the chair, there would be no upgrades that were, that would be triggered as a result of this particular development, but as Cooper Town kind of fills out, those upgrades will be kind of managed depending on the volumes that, that we're anticipating to see, but eventually Courtney Street will be upgraded to a full arterial standard.
Could you give me a couple of design features on what that actually looks like and means? I get asked questions like, will there be right-turn lanes or left-turn lanes, or will it be twinned? Just a little bit of context for the residents to understand. Thank you.
Ms. Bryden.
Yeah, thank you through the chair. As we've mentioned in prior opportunities, we are also currently undergoing the northwest sector study for roadways and transportation, and so I think that work should help prove out what Courtney Street will look like eventually as we build it out.
Thank you. Through the chair, and not trying to press the point, I've read my Cooper Town plan as well as my Rosewood plan. I've noted that there's a half a hectare set aside for the right-of-way expansion of Courtney Street. If I'm not mistaken, that's five thousand meters squared. This has been very, very actionable material for my residents with the graders and the equipment being moved around this area, trying to be a positive influence for the city and interpret what I've read to what might actually show up. I've pointed out that five thousand meters is basically like adding about fifteen feet onto the length of Courtney through its duration. I'm pretty sure that equals twinning the road in the long run. With the amount of people living on both sides of Courtney in the end, comparing to like-minded streets in the heart of our city, would indicate to me that Courtney probably needs to be twinned as well. needs to be twinned as well. I understand administration doesn't want to over-promise and under-deliver, but I'm looking like a little bit of a liar or a storyteller to my residents who want information and trying to understand it from rough concept plans isn't fun. So, I'm just looking for a little bit of factual information to share so I'm not making up a story or giving bad information.
Ms. Bryden.
Thank you, through the chair. So, this particular proposal will not be the trigger that will see an expansion of Courtney, recognizing, as you mentioned, certainly the build-out of Cooper Town and the rest of the northwest will certainly be that trigger. I can't speak to specifics today on exactly what that is going to look like.
Could I get a comment on my explanation to my residents of the 5,000 square meters of a half a hectare being used and what that might look like? Have I given any bad information in my answer in the manner that I described?
Through the chair, I'll refer that to Mr. Mario, or Mr., yeah.
So, yeah, I think what you've provided your residents is definitely relevant. I think the long-term plan and what's anticipated for Courtney is the twinning of the street, going from two lanes to four lanes, similar to like something that's happened for Woodland Drive on the other side of town. As to other features in terms of right-turn lanes and left turns, I mean, the northwest transportation study will be what kind of dictates and helps determine what's going to be required at certain intersections, as well as when it's being built, further analysis to determine kind of the lengths of those turn lanes, when it's required, if there's left turns required or otherwise, as well as like pedestrian connectivity with pathways or sidewalks, wherever it is. So, in terms of specifics, we don't have anything right now, but in the future, the likelihood it is it will be a four-lane road, upgrades pedestrian infrastructure, as well as any necessary turn lanes or otherwise that would be required for the road.
Thank you, I appreciate you saying those words. Your words mean a lot more than mine because you are a professional. Follow-up on Counselor Burton's question about commercial convenience and access, looking at the northwest corner, West Hill Park, no school, no stores, no nothing, really quite a different land in northwest compared to the rest of Regina. Cooper Town has commercial hub planned for it. Rosewood had a tie into it, they kind of tie into the heart of the subdivision, once again going by Maple Ford Gate, guys, two schools coming down the side of the school. With the delegates' words of no commercial planning in this area, does that mean you don't have to worry about a service station showing up on the edge of a schoolyard in the heart of the subdivision anymore?
Thank you, through the chair. So, the concept plan does allow for flexibility for local commercial to occur, although our policy doesn't insist upon that. Upon completion of Cooper Town, as you mentioned, that neighborhood does have commercial amenities, and it will be nearby or connects to Rosewood. And I would further add that we don't generally like to see that kind of commercial development right next to a school, and neither do the school boards. So, I don't think you'll see a service station pop up right next to the school.
Appreciate the information. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Zakina, go ahead.
So, my first question is, when I had asked about how many, I think this is how we measure these developments, how many people per hectare are, were planned for the neighborhood and are now planned for this neighborhood if these amendments pass through the chair.
Thank you for that question, through the chair. This information is included in the concept plan, and I'll refer that to Mr. Mario to speak to that.
Through the chair, there is a slight reduction in the proposed population, but it still exceeds our neighborhood population threshold or target, which is 50 persons per hectare. So, we're anticipating currently that under the existing land use plan, there would be 66 people per hectare, and the proposed would be slightly reduced to about 65.
Okay, thank you. Next, in terms of the line of questioning around a complete community, I believe the reason that, like, I, in terms of that question, I believe that was included in the report, that this is, or through the presentation, that this is intended to be a complete community. Is that accurate? Is that like the terminology that is being utilized to describe what this Rosewood Park?
Thank you, through the chair. So, I would say for the full northwest area between Cooper Town and Rosewood Park and other oncoming developments, that you would say there will be commercial, there will be schools, there will be daycares, those types of amenities that would make up a complete community.
Right, so, but my question was, was that, is that terminology currently utilized to describe Rosewood Park specifically?
Through the chair, I'll ask Ms. Dawson, oh, she's there, if she wants to speak to that.
Yeah, thank you, through the chair. Yeah, each community, we strive to have a complete community, meaning a mix of amenities, residential spaces, recreational spaces. Where we've been challenged is sometimes the phasing of those neighborhoods is quite small, and so in each phase, we're not going to have all of the amenities within those small phases that you're seeing. The Rosewood neighborhood has been challenged, as we've noted on occasion here in Chambers, with wastewater capacity, and so they haven't been able to build out all of the phases that they have desired, although there is some plans moving forward to be able to get to that more complete community, given that there's some servicing solutions on the horizon.
Okay, I guess where I'm getting a bit stuck is, because I've heard that, you know, maybe there's not a desire for Rosewood Park to actually have a convenience store, a grocery store, a gas station, or whatever, which is fine and okay, but I think then it gets a bit confusing if we then call it a complete community. So, I think this highlighted something that at least currently looks like a potential gap in our definitions or parameters or usage of the term "complete community." So, I understand that that area of the city is supposed to be a complete community, but it may be the case that Rosewood Park isn't and shouldn't be called that. And so, that's where, why I'm asking these questions, and I can just leave it there, but if administration has a response to that, that's fine, too.
Through you, Chair. The only comment I would make is that we don't require a convenience store, a grocery store, and every community is desirable, and there is flexibility in the Rosewood neighborhood concept plan to allow for that. The complete community is to make sure that there's a mix of land uses so that there's a variety of housing types and construction types and amenities for residents to, you know, have easy access to, whether that's a convenience store in every neighborhood, our policy doesn't get that granular.
Okay, I understand that, and I appreciate the clarification, and, you know, that's just something for me to be thoughtful about, just in terms of our policies, but like in terms of this proposal, I'm happy to support it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Burton, go ahead.
Thank you very much, through the chair. Just, we know the Cooper Town is coming. My question is, do we have some general guidelines that we deploy for new developments to say, you know, we don't want the convenience store right next to the school? 100% agree. Children could be hopped up on candy already too much. But do we establish any kind of distance or guidelines to say when there should be, whether there's a major community hub or a minor one that's got some convenience stores or maybe a gas station, so people aren't driving miles? What kind of guidelines do we have in place for those types of developments?
Through the chair, I'll refer that question to Ms. Dawson.
Go ahead.
Yeah, through the chair. This spring, we had brought some amendments to our official community plan. We had worked collaboratively with the school boards on policy adjustments for development in and around schools. I believe that was brought through bylaw in July. And so, we had some discussions on how school sites should be developed and located within communities, and things that we should avoid and guidelines for certain types of development around school sites, et cetera. And so, we're hoping with those adjustments that when new school sites do come online, that we'll have better guidance on how to integrate them into community. Does it get to proximity, distance, et cetera, from a convenience store? Or no, it doesn't get to that level of detail?
Thank you. Through the chair, is there any guidelines or guidance surrounding children crossing major roads, that that might be a consideration in neighborhood development? And, you know, as discussed already, crossing 9th Avenue North would be very busy, and crossing Courtney is increasingly busy. And is there any guidelines around that as areas are developed to say what needs to be within the bounds of a major artery such as Courtney Street when developments do occur?
Ms. Dawson?
Yeah, through you, the chair. The guidelines do get into pedestrian connections and location of school sites along certain types of roads. For example, trying to avoid locations on arterial roads, et cetera. So, it does get into those concerns and address those concerns that you're raising.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other questions, I'll go to Counselor Sikles. Would you like to close debate?
Through you, Mayor, no.
Okay, thank you. I will ask the clerk to start the vote. Counselor Zakina, can I get your verbal vote, please?
In favor.
Thank you.
Through you, Mayor, the motion is carried unanimously.
We will now consider the following public hearing and public notice bylaws, and I'll ask Deputy Mayor Flores to do first reading of bylaw number 2025-72 and bylaw number 2025-73.
I move, seconded by Counselor Rasovic, that bylaw number 2025-72 and number 2025-73 be introduced and read a first time.
Thank you. I'll ask the clerk to start the vote. Counselor Zakina, can I get your verbal vote?
In favor.
Thank you.
Through you, Mayor, first reading of the two bylaws is carried unanimously.
Thank you. I'll call upon the clerk to speak to the public hearing portion of the bylaws.
Through you, Mayor. As required by legislation, the following bylaws require a public hearing. Bylaw number 2025-72, the Regina zoning amendment bylaw 2025 number 18. The purpose of this bylaw is to amend the Regina zoning bylaw 2019 by rezoning the subject property located at 1462 North and 1458 North Courtney Street from MH, mixed high-rise zone, and UH, urban holding zone, to RL, residential low-rise. And bylaw number 2025-73, the Regina zoning amendment bylaw 2025 number 19. Purpose of this bylaw is to amend the Regina zoning bylaw 2019 by rezoning the subject property located at 1891 Dudeney Avenue from MH, mixed high-rise zone, to MLM, mixed large market zone. Is there anyone in the gallery today wishing to address City Council on either of these bylaws? There appears to be no one, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Flores, can you please do second reading of the bylaws?
I move, seconded by Counselor Sikles, that bylaws number 2025-72 and 2025-73 be read a second time.
Thank you. Does any member of council have questions on the bylaws? Okay, seeing no questions, I will ask the clerk to start the vote. And Counselor Zakina, can I get your verbal vote, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the one.
Thank you.
Through you, Mayor, second reading of the bylaws is carried unanimously.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Flores, can you please do consent for third reading of the bylaws?
I move, seconded by Counselor Froh, that bylaws number 2025-72 and 2025-73 go to third reading at this meeting.
Thank you. I will ask the clerk to start the vote. Counselor Zakina, can I get your verbal vote?
In favor.
Thank you.
Through you, Mayor, the motion, or consent for third reading of the two bylaws is carried unanimously as required by law.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Flores, can you please do final reading of the bylaw?
Sure. I move, seconded by Counselor Burton, that bylaws number 2025-72 and number 2025-73 be read a third time.
Thank you. I'll ask the clerk to start the vote. And Counselor Zakina, I'll get your verbal vote.
In favor.
Thank you.
Through you, Mayor, third and final reading of the two bylaws is carried unanimously.
Thank you. We will now consider item CR-25-134, investment policy, and I'll ask Counselor Bezo to please introduce the report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'm not sure what to say, but this report has a huge upside potential with minimal risk. So, in all seriousness, this report actually allows the administration to invest our funds in our accounts, in our savings accounts, if you want to put it that way, in a more balanced approach with removing some barriers to achieve higher upside potentials. So, what it is, is actually takes off some limitations and allows the investments to be managed more effectively in a balanced fund with very minimal risk to the investments. So, that is all I have. We can talk about the bond markets, we can talk about interest rates, we can talk about everything else, which will be very exciting and stimulating. But if there's any further questions on the investment strategies and portfolios, I would ask you to talk to Mr. Anderson at this point.
Perfect, thank you, Counselor Bezo. Can I have someone move the report? Counselor Sikles, and a seconder? Oh, Counselor Mattsonelli, thank you. Counselor Sikles, do you wish to speak to the report?
Through the mayor, great pitch. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Do any members of council have any questions on the report? Counselor Zakina, go ahead.
Okay, so, as requested by Counselor Bezo, I would like to hear from administration in relation to how they came up with the recommendations that I understand were supported by the Audit and Finance Committee. So, just what led to the reports and the recommendations in front of us, through the chair?
Mr. Anderson, go ahead.
Thank you, and through the chair. Thanks for the question, Counselor. When we were setting up our sinking fund, which we use, because we use bullet bonds on the debt side, we ran into an issue where it limited our ability to invest in different product types, because our policy was too restrictive and didn't contemplate a lot of the things that are used in the market right now. We went, my staff then went back to our partners at TD to say, okay, how would we adjust this to give ourselves some more flexibility without really increasing the risk profile? And this is what we came up with. So, it just allows us more flexibility in putting our money into things that are well-suited for that type of a product, where we're looking at a 30-year time horizon.
Thank you. And there are other options identified in the report, and so I guess option two, you said, well, first of all, to clarify, you said, you know, you're looking for more flexibility, but also to not increase, like, with a slight increase in risk? Is that, like, that's where you landed? Is that accurate?
Through the chair, that is accurate. We just wanted to have different options for the investment committee and for the Audit and Finance Committee to talk to. Really, what we wanted to do, though, is not run into this situation again, so leave ourselves as much flexibility without a great increase in risk.
And then, so, option two, just to make sure I understood, would be, I guess, if we were even more risk-averse and wanted even less risk, we would, that's the, that's the point of option two, is that accurate?
Through the chair, no, it was, option two is more. No, it was, option two is more if we wanted to be more prescriptive within our buckets. So what we decided to do is we added another category called infrastructure lending, which is widely used in the market, and we bucketed it with other similar risk profiles so that it allows our investment manager some flexibility within that bucket. Instead of having, you know, three tight goals or buckets for them to hit in, we bucketed all as one, and then they have flexibility within that bucket. So it just allows us an opportunity to invest in different things.
Okay. And then can you just also touch briefly on recommendation number three, also not recommended, and just explain that a bit further, like that recommendation and why it's not recommended, just to ensure I fully understand the different options and recommendations before us? On the top of Page Three of the report.
Yep. Yeah, so through the count, through the Chair, sorry. Again, this was just being more prescriptive about what our investment manager had to do to meet our goals. So, you know, we opted for more flexibility within the risk profile. So instead of being sort of very prescriptive and exactly what we should invest in within risk buckets, we opted for the more flexibility so that as we, over time, as we change out our partners there potentially, as they get RFP'd, we don't run into this issue again. Hopefully that makes sense.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I see no further questions, so I'll go to Counselor Sikles. Would you like to close debate?
Through you, Mayor, no.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I will ask the clerk to start the vote. Counselor Zikiniak, can I get your verbal vote, please?
Yes, in favor.
Thank you.
Through you, Mayor. The motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now consider the following public hearing and public notice bylaw. I'll ask Deputy Mayor Flores to do first reading of Bylaw Number 2025-74, the Regina Zoning Amendment Bylaw 2025 Number 20.
I move, seconded by Counselor Turnbull, that Bylaw Number 2025-74 be introduced and read a first time.
Thank you. I'll ask the clerk to start the vote. Counselor Zikiniak, can I get your verbal vote?
Yes, sorry, but I have a point of clarification before I vote, which is this Bylaw 2025-61, just to make sure I understand what I'm voting on.
Twenty, 2025-74.
Um, sorry, I need to pull it up first. And is it, it's after the consent items in the agenda? Is that accurate?
This is part of the public notice and public hearing bylaws.
Because eWordring is not working for me, I'm having to look at the online agenda, and that's why I'm struggling to find it. And, I mean, this is just to put it on the floor so I can say yes and hopefully find it before the next vote.
Okay. We'll take that as a, as a yes.
Through you, Mayor. First reading of the bylaws carried unanimously.
Thank you, and I'll call upon the clerk to speak to the public hearing portion of the bylaw.
As required by legislation, the following bylaw requires a public hearing. Bylaw Number 2025-74, the Regina Zoning Amendment Bylaw 2025 Number 20. The purpose of this bylaw is to amend the Regina Zoning Bylaw 2019 by rezoning property located at 2110 King Street from RU Residential Urban Zone to I Institutional Zone. Is there anyone in the gallery today wishing to address City Council on this proposed bylaw? There appears to be no one, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Flores, can you please do second reading of the bylaw?
I move, seconded by Counselor Radens, that Bylaw 2025-74 be read a second time with the following amendment. That MAP 2087A indicated in the report, CR25-129, that zoning bylaw amendment, 2110 King Street, that is to be attached to this bylaw, be amended to read as MAP 2487A under Section Four of this bylaw. Bylaw Number 2025-74.
Thank you. Does any member of council have questions? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to start the vote. Counselor Zikiniak, can I get your verbal vote? Were you able to find the content?
I did find it, thank you. In favor.
Through you, Mayor. Second reading of the bylaw is carried unanimously.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Flores, can you please do consent for third reading of the bylaw?
I move, seconded by Counselor Rassovich, that Bylaw 2025-74 go to third reading at this meeting.
Thank you. I'll ask the clerk to start the vote. Counselor Zikiniak, I'll get your verbal vote.
Ladies and gentlemen-
In favor.
Through you, Mayor. Consent for third reading of the bylaws carried unanimously as required by law.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Flores, can you please do final reading of the bylaw?
I move, seconded by Counselor Manzanelli, that Bylaw Number 2025-74 be read a third time.
Thank you. I'll ask the clerk to start the vote. Counselor Zikiniak, I'll get your verbal vote.
In.
Sorry, can you say it one more time?
In favor.
Through you, Mayor. Third and final reading of the bylaws carried unanimously.
Okay, we'll move on to delegations for MN25-16, Cities Tax and Assessment Systems Software Upgrade and Enhancement. I'd like to call upon Delegation DE25-210, Jim Elliott, to come down to the delegation table. Once you're ready, you can introduce yourself for the record, the organization representing today, if any, what city or town you reside in. You have five minutes to address counsel, after which you can respond to any questions we have for you. Go ahead whenever you are ready.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. My name is Jim Elliott. I live in Regina. And thank you for the opportunity to address this motion as well as provide you with some historic data that, about a similar introduction back in 2004. I guess the big concern I have is going from what the current ad valorem or the ability to pay method of collecting property taxes, which I think many people see as being the best option for collecting funds necessary to operate the city administration. Therefore, I'm encouraging you to stay with the current method of tax collection. I guess also I would like to bring forward the idea that it isn't necessarily the best option to take when you look at the other options, which although it's called a base tax, I equate it to what would be more commonly called a user fee, in the sense that you basically pay for the use of the services that are listed in that area, and therefore the remainder of the services across the city are captured in the second stage of the base tax. I guess the other part of this, which came up at the time of, in 2004, was the aspect of some of the real reasons why many of your requests for tax increases is in fact going up. And that's the aspect of the collection of hectareage fees for some of the suburban expansion of the city. And that's why, when I put the proposal for you today, I suggested that you actually look into that much more rigorously and identify what in fact might be a better assessment of the hectareage fees for those types of developments in the, in the perimeter of the city. I also noted that when I was doing some of my research, some cities are starting to put in what would be called a growth perimeter on their cities, and therefore putting much more of a restriction on expanding the city going forward. And you're seeing a lot of that, those costs coming to roost within the city, in the sense of the expanded costs for policing and fire, that type of thing, that those that are living in the inner city or in the, within the Ring Road perhaps, are in fact being pushed well beyond their capacity, and in fact may, in some cases, if you were to do the base tax increase, as was suggested in 2004, that in fact you may end up with a growing number of people that cannot clearly afford to live in this city. And whether that pushes them into the poorer neighborhoods, whether that pushes them into becoming homeless or being evicted because of back taxes or things like that, I guess that's, that's one speculation that I see happening, if in fact we go that route. I guess the last point, and again, this is something that was discussed back in 2004, was the idea that if you want to encourage, as the indications with the city has, to try to push more development into the vacant properties in the city, I think we need to both either go with that type of a perimeter barrier or perimeter restrictions, or in fact go the route, as I've indicated in the presentation, of doing a review of the hectareage fees and the, getting, trying to get a better sense of what the full cost of the expansion of the city is. So I'll leave it at that and be happy to answer questions.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Elliott. I'll check with my colleagues. Counselor Burton, go ahead.
Thank you for your submission through the Chair here. I, you briefly suggested that this would replace taxes. Does this motion replace the other taxes?
I'm not understanding your question.
In your submission, you suggested that using a base, a base tax at this is not appropriate, such as a progressive tax, such as mill rate.
I guess I'm, I'm of the opinion that we should be staying with the current system and therefore with using the assessed value of the properties being the way to assess the tax on those residences.
Perfect. So as you're saying that it, and this does not replace that, does it provide the ability to continue to use those existing tax systems and tools? And this provides just another option?
I think that was possibly the intention of the provincial legislation that allows the cities to move into a different model. I guess my sense of the, of the current system with the ad valorem or the ability to pay is in fact the best system for, for everyone, and therefore I'm not sure why we need to make a change at this time or even consider a change at this time.
Okay. So just one final question here that, you know, I've had many people say to me, taxes are too high, and I ask them, well, can you please tell me when taxes are just right? A tool like this, does it allow you to set a floor? Can you, so can you tell me when taxes are too low?
I guess the, the idea of a minimum taxes, as I think you're implying, I think there are times when those in fact are, are in fact problematic as well, in the sense that, like, for instance, do you start charging taxes on people that are homeless? And I think the answer to that is no. And I think that's the indication that I'm getting from considering a minimum taxes. In fact, you start to further burden those that don't have the ability to pay or have no mechanism to, to respond. And then, you know, are you, you know, pushing them even further into the margins of our society?
Okay. No further questions.
Thank you. Counselor Bezo, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Through yourself, Mayor. Mr. Elliott, you've been around for, for a long time. We've talked about some taxation, different aspects. If you go back to the base tax, and part of the base tax, I'm going to say referred to something like, you know, water, street, sewer, infrastructure, everyone who has a home or lives in Regina benefit from that base service that's offered. Why would it be opposed to go with a base tax if it's a collective tax that benefits all residents? Because you also mentioned the ability to pay, because we're, we're sitting in this tax situation right now, where we have a lot of-
Counselor, I'd say, for commentary, just say it for administration. We'll let Mr. Elliott answer the question.
I think the, the introduction of the, of the base tax doesn't take into full consideration of, as, as I've indicated, the ability to pay. And I think both in the sense that we, we want to have a fair taxation system. And I think there is, there is reason to say that using the ability to pay is, is a, is a better or a preferred option for, for the collection of that, that property tax. I guess I also have seen, as you indicated, I've been around here for a while, I can, I can remember when in fact the household residences were paying only 40% of the property taxes in the city. They're now paying over 60. So I think there's, again, there's a lot of pressures being put on, on the residents at this time, and I think the best, or at least my, you know, considered opinion, the best option is to go, stay with the, the ability to pay as a way to assess how much tax the, the residents should, should be paying.
Yeah. But you realize, Mr. Elliott, we have no idea on people's ability to pay, correct? We, we can't, as City Council, recognize people's ability to pay. We, we don't have purview to the CRA documents that they file. So you may be living in one area of town-
Counselor-
-and can't afford it, but you can live in another area and can't afford it. So we have no idea how to assess that.
Is there a question?
Yeah. So you realize that, do you realize that there's no way for us, sitting around here, to assess one's ability to pay?
Well, I guess I'm looking at the assessed value of the properties being the best proxy for, for identifying that, because if you're paying, you know, $1,000 versus $5,000, then the odds are that your, your ability to pay is higher with the $5,000 property as compared to a $1,000 property.
Would, would you say it's still safe to say that irregardless of property and where your property is, basics like water, sewer, infrastructure is still commonality?
Well, part of that, part of that list of things depends upon the amount of- depends upon the amount of water to use, for instance, or those types of things. So that, that, that fits into what, you know, what we've brought as a model for, for utilities. I don't think the the overall sense from, you know, of the tax system should be to, to go beyond that ability to pay. Like there's, there's going to be, I guess, one might call gray areas in all of that in the sense that there's going to be people, you know, in my neighborhood that are only paying a thousand dollars tax when they, they could easily afford more than that. But likewise, there's probably some that are in the the, the higher ranges that could, could, that are clearly running into that, that upper limit and therefore they're having to modify what they do with their disposable income. So it's, like I said, as, as far as I can say, this is the kind of the best path, you know, for, for all of those circumstances.
Great. Um, last question. We're in a, we're in a situation, or we'll be in a situation where our, our infrastructure is, is aged and at end of life, if not beyond end of life. We're going to be in a situation that we've had a report for our reserves. So we have to come up with some very creative measures to fund this. And we saw the federal budget yesterday. There's not going to be a lot of money left over for cities, municipalities to fund. What would a suggestion, you've been around for a long time and I mentioned like 20 some years listening to this, to fund our reserve fund and our, our infrastructure deficit, what would your suggestion being on, on a funding model? So in 30 years, we're not sitting in the same situation?
Yeah. I, I guess my first response is don't add to your problems by expanding the, the city. That would at least limit the additional burdens that you would be putting onto those residents that are going forward. I, I think also you've, you've done as much in, in many cases to cover off things as best you can. I think that there may be ways to to reduce your pressures on your taxes by, you know, perhaps being less aggressive on your, on your road maintenance, that type of things. Because, you know, many automobiles these days have quite adequate ability to go over bumps and, and cracks and that type of thing. Like those are a couple of examples of, of things. And, and I think your, your administration's already finding, you know, better ways to, to not, to not have to replace infrastructure by, you know, relining pipes and that type of thing. Those are, those are new additions that I think we've, we didn't do, you know, 20 or 30 years ago. And I think, you know, that's, those are valid ways to, to, you know, reduce the burden on, on the taxpayers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Trimble, go ahead.
Hi. Good to see you again. With this motion, it, it's asking for the dollars to buy the tax software, but doesn't actually say removing to base tax. Would you say that we should be putting the cost for the software before we've made the decision to do the tax change?
Well, I, I guess without necessarily knowing the full breadth of, of the, of the upgrades, it's, it's hard to tell. But my interpretation of that was that these upgrades are simply to go, go in the direction of the base tax or the minimum tax. And so therefore if that's the only thing that you're wishing to do by, by, you know, by spending this money, I guess my, my recommendation would, would be to not, not add to the, to the system, but, but, you know, to, to allow you to do that.
So, so do you think it'd be a wise idea to spend the money without knowing if we're going to use it, this program for base tax?
I guess that would be the, the direction I would say is, you know, like right now, we've, we're staying with the current system. And if you don't need to do any more upgrades to, to manage that system, then I, I would say don't spend the money.
So would you think that maybe we would maybe need to make a decision about how our taxes are going to be? Or maybe do a report on our taxes before we buy the software?
Well, I, I guess that's, that's my, my direction is in, in fact, you shouldn't be going in that direction and therefore you, you know, you don't need to, to the upgrades.
And do you think this motion has enough information to make a decision about our tax system? Or maybe we should be asking administration more on providing us a report before we go this route?
I, I guess it's, it's hard to, to, to assess what, you know, what needs to be, you know, done, you know, in the sense of the, you know, the kind of the chicken and egg approach to things where I guess the, my interpretation of this was that the only reason why you're doing the upgrades is to, to allow you to move into, to base or minimum tax.
Yeah. So it'd be kind of like buying, I don't know, a bike pump for a bicycle before you have the bicycle? And you don't know whether you're not, you're going to get the bicycle yet?
I, I guess in, in some manner that, you know, that, that's the implication of this. I, I think the, like I said, it, it's, I, I guess in, in a broad sense, the, the discussions that Counselor Bezo brought up in the sense of, of what you're going to have to deal with in, in a month or so, does start to, you know, push one to attempt to, to try to deal with things. And I think it would be clearer going into that budget process if in fact you are, you know, you have stated one way or the other, whether you're going to stay with the, the current system of assessment or, or go to the, to the base tax.
Thank you so much. I think the rest of my questions are probably for Counselor Burton and administration. I appreciate you being here.
Thank you. I see no other questions, Mr. Elliott. So thanks for presenting today. You can return to the gallery. Thank you. We're almost at 2:30. So I think natural break would be now to take our 15 minute break. So we'll be, we'll take our 15 minute break. We'll be back at 2:42.
Less than a minute.
Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. Okay, well now consider motion MN 25-16 Cities Tax and Assessment System Task Software Upgrade and Enhancement. And I'll ask Councilor Burton to please introduce his motion. Yeah, so we'll maybe start, I'll ask for a second or before you get started. So I'll ask for a second here for Councilor Burton. Councilor Manzanelli, thank you. Uh, Councilor Burton, go ahead, you can introduce and speak to the motion.
Thank you, through the chair. There are four primary tax tools: base, minimum, mill, and phase in. This motion simply provides the technical ability to use all tax tools. It does not implement any tax tools. Three quarters of Saskatchewan cities have base tax capability. Almost one quarter have the minimum tax capability. There are four primary tax tools. We can only do one. The ability to pay does not reflect directly upon your house choice. At the top end, your ability to pay is apparent if you choose to buy an expensive house. At the bottom end or the middle, people make choices and can choose to buy less expensive houses, thus it may not reflect their ability to pay. I personally know people with the ability to pay more than the area that they live in that have lower taxes. This would allow for a floor tax to be set. But more importantly, this motion is not about taxes. It is about democracy. This provides the capability for a council to manage taxes in a way they deem appropriate, not within the limitations of software. It means the democratic will of council is not stymied by technical limitations of the tax assessment system. This does not implement any tax tools. That debate is for another day. Some might say it's buying a bike pump before the bicycle. I might say it's getting the crib before the baby. Some might suggest that if a tax tool might want to be used, it'd simply be passed at the same time to improve the tax system to implement that tax tool. As demonstrated last year in revaluation, the will of council can be altered simply because of tax system limitations. Fellow councillors advised me that they would have voted differently on tax phase in if, that is if, the capability was there. Council should not be limited or influenced by software deficiencies. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilor Burton.
Thank you. So within discussions with councillors here, um, there's been a number of them have requested that we get some more information from administration. And to me, it's important that I allow my fellow councillors to express their opinion, their thoughts, and to give their ideas, comments, concerns about this. And so at the end, I will then be moving referral to administration to provide some more information. But I still want to give each councillor that opportunity to speak towards the motion and receive from there. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilor Burton. Okay, uh, Councilor Manzanelli, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd just like to first thank Councilor Burton for bringing this forward as well as for the last minute change to making this an information piece for referral. I think that's wise. Uh, I support this motion. Um, I just want to make it clear, I don't actually support a base tax. I think it's a regressive tax. But, uh, sitting in this position with the limited amount of ways to collect, uh, the necessary funds to complete all the necessary operations to keep the city running, it's really tricky. Uh, to have four basic primary powers and not be able to act on them, uh, as in the incident with the reassessment and trying to do the phase in and not having the manpower and necessary software to implement it, I don't think that's wise for the adjustments we need to make at times to be fair to the people we represent. Um, I made a, uh, a promise to my residents, uh, after the reassessment last year to watch for how successful the appeals were. Um, if there was a lot of success in the appeals, I would have imagined administration would have made an adjustment. But as I suspected, uh, we have some pretty, uh, smart professionals in administration. They were successful in defending against appeals. Uh, those double-digit tax increases, I made a pledge to try to bring a rea-, uh, a phase in back to bring some equity for a large adjustment. Um, the limitations Councilor Burton just spoke of in administration's ability to do their job is the exact reason why I didn't follow through with the phase in. Um, I talked to my fellow councillors first, I garnered support. I described the lack of equity in the position, they agreed with me. But at the end of the day, uh, with the thinning of administration's employees, as well as the lack of investment in the necessary software to keep things up to date, I couldn't perform as I promised, and it made me a liar. And I don't think that should happen to someone in the future. Um, I don't, wouldn't vote in favor of a base tax. I followed that, uh, debate back in 2006. I watched the formation of our utility fund. Uh, the utility fund looks after all the sanitary, freshwater, and the basic, well, your basic sanitary needs of a city. Uh, it operates off of user fees. You know, when you're building all the pipes in the ground and you're picking up all the garbage and you're operating off a fee, not a tax, that kind of operates equally for all households in the city, and it offsets a lot of everything you build. That kind of, in essence, is a base tax. So to put one on residential property as well with all their arguments against it, that's not what I want to do right now. But looking forward to the hard decisions that have to be made and the tools and the ability to implement those tools, I think that's a base responsibility of a council to upkeep, because those are what the decisions were charged with and the tools were given to do those decisions with. So you have to be able to use the tools in the toolbox properly, and that's what this is about. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Manzanelli. Councilor Fro, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you through the chair. I just want to start off by, uh, thanking Councilor Burton as always for the way in which he approaches his work. He's proactive with his colleagues, he's collaborative and collegial, uh, today, so, so I appreciate that. And you always do a good job, Mark, uh, looking out, uh, for your, your ward. I know you've got a lot of feedback on this. Um, I think I just want to just start off by saying that Saskatchewan is the only province in Canada that allows for a base tax. No major cities in Saskatchewan use a base tax. A base tax is a tax on those who can least afford to pay it. So what a base tax means is a tax increase, say, on a, a senior, an Eastview, or a young student in North Central, or a single mom working in Glencairn. But it's more than that, actually. A base tax is actually a disproportionate tax on renters, on condo owners. A base tax is actually a real challenge for a lot of businesses, because depending on how it's applied, and we do have discretion, a base task can also take some of the tax that might be paid by a large industrial or commercial user, and then push that down and spread it out amongst smaller businesses like your favorite coffee shop, retailer, uh, or, or restaurant. So in 2021, administration commissioned a study and used $500 as a sort of sample example. And under that specific scenario, if we were to implement a base tax, 25% of houses in Regina would see a tax increase, 55% of renters would see an increase, 75% of condo owners, and about 7.5 of higher income houses would see a decrease. Uh, and so the tools we have today, while imperfect, in my view, they're not just more equitable, they're actually very targeted and strategic. We have a dedicated mill rate to fund things like Mosaic Stadium. And so I understand the problem that Councilor Burton and others are trying to solve. Uh, but I think at a time of economic uncertainty and shrinking disposable income, what we don't want to do, uh, is push people where they're down. We want to give them a hand up. To councillor's Burton point about a software system, I'm certainly in favor of making sure that we have the tools to do things like a tax phase in. And if there's an opportunity to vote on those things separately down the road, I'm almost certainly look at it. Uh, but I know, uh, while there's no uniformity of thought, certainly, uh, those in Ward 3 believe that the best way, uh, to deal with our infrastructure deficit and the best way to deal with, uh, taxes that may be paid disproportionately by higher valued homes is to increase the value and to revitalize, uh, our communities, uh, that may be experiencing challenges today. So I really appreciate how Mark went, uh, about this. Uh, but I'd encourage everyone to think very carefully before we look at a minimum tax or a base tax, because they're not just regressive. I think they're actually counter, uh, to our official community plan and the principles by which we collect taxation and build community today. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Zikiniak, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so, um, I do have, uh, okay, I guess my first question is to, uh, Councilor Burton, who mentioned, uh, potential referral. Um, just, uh, for the sake of clarity for my additional questions, are you meaning, um, a referral of this entire motion? And then also, are you meaning a referral prior to the budget of, um, for the 2026 budget? Through the chair.
Go ahead, councillor.
So, uh, thank you through the chair. Uh, would not be my expectation that this be anything for this, this upcoming season. As in the original motion, it was two years out, would be the first time that there might even be possible for that. And so I would be looking to the administration to give us analysis. Um, you know, they gave me an initial funding amount. They may fine tune that to find that the cost to do that may be less. Um, they may then, and we all, we could also get some more statistics about a hundred dollar base tax. If we had a $400 minimum tax, um, and maybe some comparisons with when people's taxes went down by 50% in some part of the city versus other areas, uh, that we could understand what some, some things that might have happened if we had some of these other tax tools available.
Okay, so, uh, thank you. So, um, am I to understand then that you're, you'd be looking to administration? I guess first of all, is your referral for the entire motion, like both one and two?
Yes.
Okay, and then, um, it sounds like you'd be looking to administration to provide guidance about the timing of when the report back would be. Is that accurate?
Uh, yeah, before next tax season.
Right, okay, thank you. Um, okay, now, um, I think this question is also for Councilor Burton, just to ensure that we're, um, I think this is an important, uh, initial point is, you know, so this motion talks about a base tax and a minimum tax. So, um, I think it would be useful to get a definition on the floor so we can all make sure we're understanding the same, on the concepts in the same way, and also for the benefit of the media and the public and anybody listening today. So, Councilor Burton, um, sorry to put you on the spot, but would you be prepared or would you rather administration, um, give us a basic definition of what is intended, um, by these terms, base tax, minimum tax?
I am 110% prepared when I put a motion like this in. Uh, the base tax is a bottom, at the bottom, you put a hundred dollar base tax, and then you would apply the mill rate on top of that. And so the base $100 would go across every household in the city. And so the base $100 would go across every household in the city, and then you'd apply the mill rate on top of that. The minimum tax would be you calculate the mill rate for all the houses you do currently there. And if you are below the minimum rate, that, like I said, there were some houses went from $490 down to $270 that explicitly looked at, you might say the minimum tax is $350. And then anybody that's below that $350, they pay $350. And then the rest of taxes still continue the same. That's a basic explanation of those taxes.
Thank you. Okay, I just thought that was important to ensure we had that common understanding of what we're talking about here. Now, okay, sorry, I'm looking at my notes here. So the intention then is to refer this entire motion to administration for a report in relation to your recommendations. Are you, is the question just administration? Maybe can you clarify the language of this referral? Because once you put it up there, I know we won't be able to ask further questions. So is it just administration report back on your recommendations? Or is it administration, this is what we want to do, tell us how to do it through the chair?
So through the chair, the referral to the... Do I need to get this exacted, or is this... General idea, okay?
Just to give the intent.
You betcha. So this would be your referral to administration would be to fine-tune the estimate. The tax department just came up with an estimate, and I believe, you know, it's a definitely valid estimate. But that was in reasonably short order, so that I would expect that they could then fine-tune it to then say, what is the exact amount of money and effort we required? And then to be, look at the actual impact and how it's implemented, both the phase-in, the impact and how the ability of council to do that. But then I would also expect them to come back with some examples of what would be the impact of a $100 base tax, a $300 base tax, a $400 minimum tax, just, you know, a variety of set points. It's not some $5,000 minimum tax, please. This is at a very small rate. But, and then demonstrate what that would have impact on the various property values around the city and the major housing segments that the city would normally break them down into. And then perhaps then a dollar differential that would then provide that we could then see. I guess...
Okay, thank you.
I'd ask, one more thing would be, just discussing that relationship between ability to pay and the house you choose. I don't know if there's any income tax statistics that might show... I can tell you that if you go to some of my ward, some of the areas of my ward, definitely the people are high-income earners. But I can suggest to you, like I said, I personally know people that make choices to live in places that dot, and maybe some correlation with some of those statistics, because people keep saying, talking about the ad valorem system and the ability to pay. And this is where we struggle with the tax system in Saskatchewan, that it does obstruct it.
Okay. There was a question from councillor Zikiniak. So, yeah, go ahead, councillor.
Yeah, thank you. And just in terms of this referral, are you, is there also, are you asking for administration to essentially give their opinion on the merits of moving forward with this? Or is that outside of the scope of your referral? And I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the referral.
I would expect them to give the impact. I think that the decision about any of these taxes is a political decision rather than administrative decision.
Okay, so thank you. That's helpful for me in terms of understanding what's intended by the referral. I appreciate that, yes, additional information is required. And I can, I mean, I think that's important, that if we are to move forward with a decision, a policy change, that we do have comprehensive information on it. I know that philosophically I am not aligned with these outcomes. I don't need more information to, more information will not change my mind in that regard. I will not be supporting a referral for that reason, because I want to be careful that I'm not overloading administration with reports if it's information that is, that I personally do not need. And so I think that, yeah, I mean, I'm just noting that I can't support the referral. I think I need to be, we need to be careful that we're directing administration to do reports that will give us information that if we're missing information to make a decision, great. In my case, that's not the case, and so I will not be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Mr. Nickel. Go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. With respect to council, we are, we're respectfully waiting for someone to ask admin a question about the impact on this. But I'll just go out and limit on that anticipation. Administration did an extensive amount of work four years ago on this. I'm not convinced, or we're open to be convinced, that much has changed that would result in any change of the report from 2021. The other practical thing is, and again, it's not for me to enter debate or anyone else to enter debate on behalf of administration, but the fundamental question is, do you want to go to a minimum and/or a base tax? Because if you don't, we would never even consider upgrading software to accomplish something that we are not going to go down the road of, particularly with our capital requirements being very significant right now, and everybody's already been alluding to funding shortfall. So Mr. Anderson and Ms. Mills are far better versed in telling you the impacts of this. But I just wanted to make sure people understand that there was a recent report four years ago, and very little may have changed in that regard that would alter any outcome of the information we'll provide.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Go to councillor Flores. Go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair, so I was, I would like to ask that question, what would be the impact to administration? But with that, I would also like to know in terms of a phase-in capabilities. So I'd like to also make it clear, I would not support a face, sorry, a base tax or minimum tax approach. However, I would support a phase-in, provided that we have the capacity and the tools to do it. So with this motion, I heard that, I'm assuming there was some conversations with administration to inform the amounts. Is this amount that is asked of administration necessary? Or what would administration need to be able to move forward with a phase-in tax? And when that would be the best time to do that?
Mr. Anderson, go ahead.
Through the chairs, thanks for the question, councillor. So our systems have the ability to do phase-in. We do do it on the commercial side of the business already. What we require is advance notice. And when we say we didn't have the resources this spring, it was people. So when we do a phase-in, we get an elevated number of calls and an elevated number of appeals, just because it adds complexity to the way everything works. So we would be very supportive of, you know, if we wanted to look at doing a phase-in for the next assessment period, is starting to put money away now into, I think it's a reserve, getting a nod. So into the reserve now, so that when, when we do the next assessment and council says, yes, we want to phase it in for residential, we will then have the money at that time to fund the bulge that we'll need for staff to answer calls, respond to calls, et cetera. And really, we're supportive of that from a phase-in perspective, because our system already allows it.
So I think my question then, now the chair would be to the clerk. If I would, wanted to separate this motion into two votes, so that we could then move forward to start the process to support a phase-in, this would have to be after the referral motion, whether it passes or not?
Go ahead.
Through you, chair. So depending upon what happens, currently, right now, concurrence is on the floor, which is the motion that was published. If that moves forward, then yes, you can ask to separate the vote on that. If, when councillor Burton closes debate, he moves a referral, the referral trumps the concurrence motion that's on the floor. If the referral passes, then the item is done. If the referral is lost, then we would go back to the concurrence motion that's on the floor, and you could ask at that time to separate out the vote.
So in that case, I, given that I would never support a base tax, then there is no need to get a report that, as Mr. Nickel has indicated, we likely wouldn't see something too different from what we've seen in the past. I would like us to, I, not us, but I would not support the referral motion, because I would like to separate the vote, because I want to see us go to a phase-in approach, so that we can have both phase-in for residential and for commercial. And given what I've heard from our CFO, is the sooner that we get on that process to fund that reserve and to, to set up everything that needs to be set up for that to move forward, this seems like a good opportunity to put that as, as an item to move forward with. So for that reason, I can't support the referral, because as we've heard, there isn't going to be much information that is different from what has been provided before. But we do have the ability to move on with a phase-in, should we separate this vote and move with option two of the, what councillor Burton has brought forward. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Councillor...
Thank you to the chair. I'm similar to what Flores has said. I am supportive of the phasing of the taxes, but it's very highly unlikely that I would support a base tax. I believe that if this came to us as an administration report, it would likely say that it would be in conflict with three of our principles, at least. I think it would be in conflict with reconciliation and with our inclusive, inclusivity idea, diversity, equity, and accessibility of the social, economic parts of it. And that strat plan was just this month, and that's two of three right there. But without that information from administrative report, I don't know that for sure, but I'm pretty sure it would be. And support a base task, but phasing for sure. And I think the questions were asked by councillor Flores about if we, what we would need for phasing. So I don't know where this referral ends up, but...
So just to be clear, there's no referral on the floor right now? We'll have to wait until that actually happens. And so what I would recommend is if you have any indication of what you would or wouldn't support in terms of a referral, you could indicate that, and that may inform councillor Burton and how he words it, or it may not. But there's no referral on the floor currently, but this would be an opportunity to indicate that if you were interested in more information, you could indicate what you'd be in support of and what you wouldn't be.
Okay, well, I'm not interested in spending money on a crib without knowing I'm having a baby. So in that case, I'm not interested in updating our software for taxation system. I'm not confident council is going to have it without having that discussion. And I do not think I would likely support a base tax, so I don't think that report is necessary. So really, I am in support of the phasing portion of the taxes.
Thank you, councillor Rasevich. Go ahead.
Through the chair. I guess I, we got sent that report, I guess, from 2021. I went through it, and I'll be honest, I went through that report and it's hard to, it's a lot to digest, put it that way. So for, I mean, for me to try to, to do something that I don't understand, you know, it's kind of, it's pretty difficult. I need to see, hear other perspectives of why a base tax might be good, why it might not be good. I've heard, you know, general opinions, so I just need, I need to learn, I need to understand and learn more before I can make a good decision. I guess, and the other part is, what's the cost of the software, I guess, to be able to do a base tax? What's the cost to, what do we have to collect to do a phase-in? Is that economical as well? You know, so, because we're throwing, you know, numbers around, I need to understand before I make decisions, you know, which way I want to go, and I need to understand. So I don't know, but rest of council, if they totally understand that 2020, 2021 report, and especially in my ward, I got a huge number of people who live in, you know, condo complexes, apartments, et cetera. You know, just kind of going through that, it looked like it was to be a huge increase, I guess, an increase on them. But again, I need to understand this a lot better personally. So I don't know what, how other councillors feel if they read through that report, totally understand it. I said, good on them. But for me, I need some tutorials on that before I, you know, make a good decision, that's all. So, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, councillor Rasevich. Councillor Raditz, go ahead.
Okay, so I guess I am not obviously going to be supporting a base tax, as I feel that that's regressive and digressive, obviously. And so I don't also equally believe that people should be penalized for their earnings and where they choose to live, whether that's north or central or whatever. And equally, I mean, people should be responsible if they choose to live in a higher, more affluent neighborhood than, you know, the expectation is that you're going to pay what you're going to pay. I mean, unfortunately, that's the reality of what it is right now. So I just don't believe in penalizing folks based on those criteria. And thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll just, just my quick commentary, I think I'm in no, in no ways in support of a base tax. But what I'm interested in is if administration has anything that we've learned through this last tax assessment cycle in terms of alternative tax mechanics or tools that they see that would be beneficial to our next tax assessment cycle, that some referral or some level of communication or reporting back would be beneficial for council to consider. So for administration, I'm curious if, regardless of anything happening with the current motion on the floor, I'm just curious if there's anything from a tax mechanics assessment, procedure, resources, or tools that you would see as a benefit for admin to look at for the next assessment cycle. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks for the question. I think, you know, what we learned through the process and where we've sort of been pushing the province is to go to a two-year cycle rather than a four. Now, the reason for that is that some major things can change in our marketplace over a four-year period, especially when you throw in a global pandemic in the middle. That impact and timing around a critical number of sales in newer areas can create a single assessment period having relatively large increases on some homes, on assessed values. You know, we would be open to a phase-in in those instances. And that's why I think admin has always been supportive with council on phasing in on commercial, where there's much wider, typically much wider variations. Commercial can be much more complex. So I would say that administration is supportive of doing a phase-in in residential, given that we can have some wide variances in a four-year period. We just ask that we get the resources in order to do it, because it is increased workload. Our system is able to do it, so we don't need to do system work on that end. More, just be prepared early and get, you know, our residents ready for it, so that they understand that there's going to be a phase-in over a number of years, but we would be supportive of that. In terms of a base tax, again, the report that's, that's been sent, that was circulated, that was prepared in 2021, nothing materially has changed, right? There's no need for us to redo that report unless you think there's something specific missing in there or a question. But from our perspective, that report covers off the essential impact of a base tax and a minimum tax and the complexities of it with the city of our complexity. So not easy to compare to some of the smaller cities and towns in Regina, who don't have the complexity of different styles of houses. I appreciate councillor Burton's definition of a base tax, but he referred to houses. We have much more than houses in this city. We have apartment buildings, condo buildings, et cetera. We have a lot of different styles of commercial property. So a base tax and a minimum tax is much more complex than it is in a smaller center. So hopefully that answered your question.
That very much answers my question. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Yeah, with that, I think I would be interested in that case in either a referral or a tabling motion to give some time to figure out what that referral would look like in the context of what I've heard today from administration, to make sure that we're in alignment and recognizing information. recognize the information we have today. Not interested in a base tax, but interested in providing administration the tools when we have those circumstances like we did this other, this past assessment cycle so we can, we have the tools to address that, like we're brought up by Counselor Manzonielli.
Point of clarification, point of order.
Sure. I'm not trying to sneak an extra question. I'm, I am, I am sneaking one anyways. Mr. Anderson referred to the fact that we have the tools in place, it's time needed. You asked the question about what administration's taken from this. Just thinking to how this came about, council has no control over when we find out the reassessment or who's going to be affected. We have to react to ask for the phase-in, or like in this year's period where I waited for the appeals to be sussed out before I came to ask, what would the time definition be for a future council, for a comfortable period for administration to have a heads-up? Because I don't know how that timeline could ever be controlled better than I did. So I don't know if that's a pertinent question for clarification or not, and I hope I explained it well.
Well, you know what? It's, it's a question that I had, so I'll just say that that's my question now. Thanks, Counselor Manzonielli.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, go ahead.
Thank you, and through the Chair. You know, we were comfortable, I believe we came and asked and got permission to do phase-in for commercial before this council was in. So doing assessment over an election period is not ideal, but we were comfortable if we had said in the summer before the assessment kicks in to be given notice. Now, that being said, we would love notice today to do it three years from now because then we know we're ready. I think if, if we sort of, council gave us, you know, started putting money away for the instance that we are going to do it and, and under the assumption we're going to phase-in the residential, if we end up in an assessment period where there isn't large swings, we can always decide to back away from it, right? But a lot harder to implement it late, right? So I would recommend that, you know, as early as possible, that we start saving for the plan to do phase-in and then always have the ability to say, yeah, we don't need to do it in this cycle.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Yeah, so with that, I think that outlines where my head's at, and I, I'm in alignment with, with what you're saying. And really, it's a, a timing thing of when, when, if and when council decides we want to enable that. With that, I will go to, it appears, back to Counselor Burton for closing debate. Go ahead, Counselor Burton.
Thank you. First, a couple of questions here. I just want to confirm that we can separate the, the two votes that the phase-in and the min base tax could be separated and with a motion, there's no tie-in, no technical linkage between them?
Mr. Anderson, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll defer to the acting city clerk for technicalities around that, but from a, from our system standpoint, they would be separate items. Yes.
Okay. Ms. Ackerman?
Through you, Chair. Yes, you can absolutely request to separate out the items, but I appreciated you asking the question to administration just to make sure if those were separated out and one were to get voted in and the other not, not that they were paired or married to one another, that there would be implications of that of one not being approved or the other.
And through the Chair, there were references to the report in 2021. I would ask, was there, there was a number of houses that dropped in, in valuation this past one here in 2024? Was there a similar event in 2021, or did all houses in general go up? Was there?
Mr. Anderson?
Through the Chair, yes, thanks for the question, Counselor. We've seen some ebbs and flows over time. If we go back to the early 2000s and sort of the boom time for the city where we had a lot of projects, we had, you know, the whole city go up, and then we had cycles where the outside of the city would go up and then cycles where the inside of the city would go up. It all depends on what market forces are out there. In the one prior to this one, we saw houses within the donut, we call it, so go up more than houses on the outskirts of the city. And so it all depends on market impacts and what sales are doing. You know, we're already looking at forward ahead to the next one. There is still very strong demand for houses in new greenfield areas on the outskirts of the city, but this summer, we've seen a correction back and seen, you know, housing prices strengthen within the core of the city. And so what that impact will be when we get, ultimately get to the, the next four-year cycle, we'll have to see. But it's definitely not a steady trend of one area of the city. When you start stepping back and looking at it long-term, various areas of the city ebb and flow as market conditions change. Hopefully that answers your question.
Okay. So with that, through the Chair, I guess procedurally, I'd like to then ask to separate the two motions to vote on the phase-in. And then I would then have a separate vote then on the tabling, I guess, to table part one motion, which was the minimum tax and base tax. And assuming then if that tabling fails, then we go back to the main motion itself, which would then be voteable. That's correct?
Ms. Ackerman, go ahead.
Through you, Mayor. So Counselor Burton, if I understand you correctly, what you're requesting to do is you would like to separate out the vote for point one and two, with direction that the separate vote on point one would be to table it to the November 19th meeting, but you would like to vote on point number two today. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then your question, based on that understanding, was that if the vote to table point number one to the November 19th meeting fails, procedurally, what would then happen is, yes, then it would go back to concurrence, that you would vote on it at today's meeting?
Thank you. So do I need officially say that? Or is it good?
Can I ask, point thirty?
Yeah, Counselor Fro.
Yeah, through the Chair. Thank you, Clerk. Am I understanding correctly that a tabling motion doesn't involve any more work in this case for administration? It's just simply allowing people more time to review the 2021 report? As in, we're giving those that might be interested a little bit more time to digest the information, but not asking administration to do, to do, to do more work? Kind of sort of further to Counselor Flores and Shannon's points. So just look for some clarity there, please.
Through you, Chair, that is correct. It would also provide members with the opportunity, if perhaps they were thinking about potentially bringing for, forward a referral to consider at the next meeting, that they would have time to work on how they would like that working to be crafted for consideration at the November 19th meeting.
Perfect. Thank you. That'll be the first vote that we'll take. So.
Sorry, I, when Counselor Fro asked about whether additional work would need to be done, should this be tabled, I just, could you clarify? Just, was the answer yes or no?
I'll, I'll let the acting city clerk speak to that. Go ahead.
Through you, Mayor. My apologies, I did not answer that question. There would be no additional work required at this time if the tabling motion were to pass.
It's just additional time for folks to be able to, okay.
Correct.
Okay, so we will take the vote. I'll ask the clerk to start the vote on the tabling motion for point number one. And Counselor Zikiniak, can I get your verbal vote?
Opposed.
Thank you.
The tabling of point number one is carried in a vote of nine to two, with the following members voting in favor as follows. Counselor Fro, Sickles, Bezo, Manzonielli, Burton, Radens, Flores, Rassovich, and Mayor Bishinsky. Those voting against were Counselors Turnbull and Counselor Zikiniak.
Okay, thank you. And now I'll ask the clerk to start the vote on point number two.
In favor.
Thank you.
Through you, Mayor. The vote on point number two of the motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we will now consider bylaws. Twenty, the following bylaws. 2025-61, the conservation of heritage properties tax exemption for the Frontenac Apartments located at 2022 Lauren Street, bylaw 2025. 2025-62, the conservation of heritage properties tax exemption for the Gemel Residents located at 2275 Montague Street, bylaw 2025. 2025-63, the conservation of heritage properties tax exemption for the Broadfoot Residents located at 2356 Scarth Street, bylaw 2025. 2025-64, the conservation of heritage properties tax exemption for the Tommy TC Douglas Residence, Sneeth slash Douglas Residence located at 217 Angus Crescent, bylaw 2025. 2025-65, the conservation of heritage properties tax exemption for Dark Block located at 2125 11th Avenue, bylaw 2025. 2025-77, the conservation of heritage properties tax exemption for the Somerset Block located at 1806 Smith Street, bylaw 2025. 2025-78, the conservation of heritage properties tax exemption for the Old Post Office, City Hall located at 1801 Scarth Street, bylaw 2025. 2025-79, the conservation of heritage properties tax exemption for the McCallum Residents located at 336 Albert Street, bylaw 2025. 2025-80, the Heritage Maintenance and Major Grant Agreement Execution Bylaw, 2025. And finally, 2025-81, the conservation of heritage properties tax exemption for the Rigby Residents located at 2805 McCallum Avenue, bylaw 2025. I will ask Deputy Mayor Flores to do first reading of those few bylaws.
Is it okay if I just read like 64, 65?
Absolutely not. I think it's okay.
If you have to do it, I have to do it. The 2025.
Oh, sorry. For the record, you have to say them, yeah.
All right, perfect. I will do that. Okay, I move, seconded by Counselor Bezo, that bylaws number 2025-61, 2025-62, 2025-63, 2025-64, 2025-65, 2025-67, 2025-78, 2025-79, 2025-80, and number 2025-81 be introduced and read a first time.
Thank you. I'll ask the clerk to start the vote. Counselor Zikiniak, can I get your verbal vote, please?
In favor.
Thank you.
Through you, Mayor. Counselor Fro has now left the meeting, so the bylaw is carried unanimously with all 10 members present.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Flores, can you please do second reading of the bylaws?
All right. I move, seconded by Counselor Rassovich, that bylaws number 2025-61, 2025-62, 2025-63, 2025-64, 2025-65, 2025-77, 2025-78, 2025-79, and, no, 2025-80 and 2025-81 be read a second time.
Thank you. I'll ask the clerk to start the vote on the second reading of the bylaws. Counselor Zikiniak, can I get your verbal vote?
In favor.
Thank you.
Second reading of the bylaws is carried unanimously.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Flores, can you please do consent for third reading of the bylaws?
All right. I move, seconded by Counselor Sickles, that bylaws number 2025-61, 2025-62, 2025-63, 2025-64, 2025-65, 2025-77, 2025-78, 2025-79, 2025-80, and 2025-81 be read a third time.
Thank you. I'll ask the clerk to start the vote. Counselor Zikiniak, your verbal vote?
In favor.
Thank you.
Through you, Mayor. Consent for third reading of the bylaws is carried unanimously as required by law.
Thank you. And Deputy Mayor Flores, can you please do final reading of the bylaws?
All right. I move, seconded by Counselor Burton, that bylaws number 2025-61, 2025-62, 2025-63, 2025-64, 2025-65, 2025-77, 2025-78, 2025-79, 2025-80, and 2025-81 be read a third time.
Thank you. I'll ask the clerk to start the vote. And Counselor Zikiniak, your verbal vote?
In favor.
Thank you.
Third and final reading of the bylaws is carried unanimously.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Counselor Sickles and a seconder, Counselor Burton, any opposed? And carry. Thank you very much, everybody.